You're good.
Yeah. Okay. Town administrator, please, if you want to give us our rules.
Just a couple of housekeeping rules for everyone to understand. On that table to your right are copies of the current executive order issued by Governor Hoven that mandates what we're allowed to do and not do as far as its gathering. Everyone is separated by six foot unless you move to your chair. While in the room, I ask that you do wear your protective face shield. Outside of the chamber, there are two restrooms. There is soap at the sinks if you need that to wash your hands. There's also hand sanitizer on the table over there as well. That's it.
Thank you. So we'll call to order our regularly scheduled mayor and council meeting for November 9th. If you could, please join me in the pledge of allegiance. The pledge of allegiance to the pride of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. The first item on our agenda is the approval of the work session minutes from October 21st, 2020. And I don't know if we can approve, can we? Since there were the three council members that were in attendance, one is absent.
No, we can. You're right.
So we'll table the work session minutes for October 21st, 2020 until our following meeting. Up next is the gentle item one Z, the approval of the regular session minutes from October 26th, 2020.
Make a motion to approve.
A motion by council member, uh, Oris.
Second.
Second by council member Ner. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? As the record show, it passed four to zero with one council member absent. And do we have the chief of?
I've called the mayor and I've texted and I don't, I don't see him. He's not answering.
How about we move that agenda item down? And then if the chief joins us, then we can move forward with that introduction.
We did.
So we'll move on to agenda item number three, motion 2020 dash 28. The motion approving extending the current tattoo moratorium from November 18th, 2020 to November 18th, 2022. So an extension of a two-year term. And the town attorney, David Gasswell, is going to take point on that.
Yes. Let me get some background on this. How all this became was back in 2017, that we were alerted to the fact that we have no regulations in the town limits on tattoo parlors. So I was instructed to draft an ordinance outlawing tattoo parlors within the town limits. That ordinance was, we had our first reading on it and discussion ensued. And at that point, we formed a committee, a tattoo ordinance committee, and met over the course, Mr. Mayor, you were on it, and Mr. Burrell, you were on as well. It was well over a year that we met. And it was determined that the county health department either would not or could not help us to ensure that if a person opened a tattoo parlor within the town limits, that their proper safety protocols would be in place. That's how this moratorium was born when we formed that committee. To my knowledge, nothing has changed so far as the county health department is concerned. So I guess the issue is, do we want to extend this another two years to see if something changes? Or just go back to square one, I guess would be the only other alternative and outlawing.
And I would also like to recognize we have the vice chair and the chair of the tattoo ordinance committee in attendance this evening, Dana Helmuth and Matt Amy. So if there's anything you would like to say in addition to that, or if the council has any questions, they are here to facilitate that discussion. Matt, do you mind coming up if you don't mind, maybe you and Dana vote?
Not at all. And we'll be talking through the filter of this mask.
Please.
So Dave is correct in everything that he stated. The reason that, like basically the barrier that we ran into was discussing with the health department, the need for inspections for these tattoo establishments. In speaking with you and Mr. Burrell and Mr. Helmuth and everyone else on the council, we decided to shelve our efforts at the time because we felt as though it wasn't necessary for us to push an agenda that we didn't see moving forward. We feel as though we still would like to push an agenda because we believe that tattooing is a viable industry. It has been for years. We believe that regulations are necessary. Whether or not the health department inspects and verifies that these locations are up to their standards is, in my opinion, an issue with the health department because they should be concerned with the health and safety of everyone within the county regardless of their chosen profession. Wycomico County, they are a complaints-based department where there's no oversight unless there's a complaint that is submitted. The way that the regulations are written, it's not, it's not illegal, it's overregulated. There's a barrier to entry for people with hard 20, 30 years experience. We're not physicians, we're not osteopaths, we're not going to hire one to sit in the facility to watch us do our work. But by overregulating the industry, you're not allowing a viable industry to thrive. So we would like to continue to work with the town, continue to have the tattoo advisory committee work through the regulations that we originally proposed, and hopefully re-approach the health department with renewed vigor toward the desire for the town to move forward to allow this type of business to exist. There are stipulations within the town, or within the county code that stipulates that their regulations apply to all lands lying outside of incorporated townships. Which means that each incorporated township must develop their own regulations lest they have none. So you have other townships within Worcester County that have established their own sets of regulations that mimic what the county currently has. When we ran into this issue in 2017, someone came to the town and wanted to open a studio for microblading. The town didn't know what microblading was, they reached out to the health department. The health department came back and said, "Microblading is a form of cosmetic tattooing. You don't have tattoo regulations on your books. Here's ours. Go ahead and use those, that'll cover you." And when the town put forth that information, Dana's born and raised in Berlin, I moved to Berlin five years ago, I'm from the area, I grew up in Salisbury. We're both world-renowned tattoo artists that live in this county and we can't practice our trade because of the regulations that are in place. So we are advocates for our business, for our industry. We are professionals. We are interested in pushing forward in a positive, safe, and cohesive way so that the town of Berlin can move forward and progress regardless of sort of barriers that we run into. And I'm hoping with the new administration, I spoke with Shanika on the phone for about 45 minutes the other day, we had a wonderful conversation. I was talking with Jack a few years ago, it's been a while. I would like to reconvene the committee, possibly have a few other council members taking Zach's place because he can no longer be a part of it. Please, I hope Dean Burrell would join us so that we can discuss where we were and the possibilities of us moving forward with certain efforts.
So David, given what he just said, why do we need a moratorium in person?
Because anyone could open a parlor, you could open a parlor right now.
Under county regulations, which are.
No, no, no. We're not covered by a county regulation. We would be covered by no regulation.
Before the moratorium, anyone could have come in with no regulations and established the business.
And then no, no knowledge or skill.
No oversight.
Yeah, no oversight whatsoever.
And just as an aside, what the county has done, and Ocean City has adopted essentially what the county did, they've made it cost prohibitive that a person could not open a tattoo parlor in the county because you're required to have a physician on staff.
At all times.
Not your doctor can sit there in your tattoo parlor. That's why there's no tattoo parlors in Worcester County.
And then like Matt mentioned, if you look just to our west, there are, there's another county that doesn't have any type of provisional safety guidelines, it's all complaint-driven.
And they have had issues with certain studios within Wycomico County where they have had complaints and there were diseases that were transmitted based on the complaints that were filed with the Wycomico County Health Department. And we're not interested in having that kind of activity occur in town. We would like regulations that we follow regardless of the municipalities where we work. We follow these because it's not only our client's safety, but it's our own safety that is on the table. So if we don't follow these regulations that are standard, then we run the risk of injuring people that don't need to be injured anymore than we're going to injure them anyway. I mean, I am a tattoo artist.
So I just have a couple of questions, actually. What, so you haven't met, I mean, you haven't had a meet to meet, when's the last time that you haven't met?
It's been over a year.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is, and what is your, what is like your, in your mind, your timeframe, how far up your plan?
As soon as possible, but I'm more than happy to work at the pace of gun. Because we have taken the time to do our due diligence to create these regulations and to write these regulations in a way that we, that I think would suffice to ensure the health and safety of anyone that comes to these studios. The issue that we run into is at the county level, specifically with the county health department, and the lack of inspection oversight that is offered from the county health department. Now, there's a whole lot of confusing legislation in place in the county that separates body piercing from tattoo establishments. The county health department currently has an inspection mechanism for body piercing studios that exist on the boardwalk. They do not have anything in their tattoo establishment regulations stipulating inspections by the health department for tattoo establishments. What we were hoping was that we could suggest, or we could submit our regulations to the health department, and the health department would write a line item that would offer inspections for tattoo establishments that exist within Berlin, or any tattoo establishment that sets up. If a doctor decides that they want to go tattoo in Ocean City, they still should have to have the health department inspect their facility. They don't have any mechanism set up for tattoo establishments to be inspected by the health department. Now, that logic might be, well, we have a doctor on the premises, you know, they have to follow AMA guidelines, we don't need inspections by the health department. I'm not trying to speculate what the logic is behind these ordinances, but what we were trying to argue for was, we have our regulations in place, if a tattoo establishment wants to come in, we want the health department to inspect that establishment before they open their doors, and then either annually or quarterly have the health department come back and verify that they're still working under these guidelines. And it's my understanding that when we went to the county and asked them for that service, they said no.
Yeah, the county commissioners would have had to amend their ordinance, and we were told it was not going to happen.
So now, I'm willing to work at whatever pace it takes to be able to get in front of the county council, who is also the board of directors of the health department, I believe.
Yeah, yeah.
To officially ask for that request.
That's, I mean, that's my, that was kind of my question. It seemed from this report and your explanation that it's actually the county commissioners that need to decide if they want to change.
They would have to amend their ordinance to allow or authorize the county health department to perform inspections of tattoo parlors in the town of Berlin limits. They were not interested in doing that.
During the committee meetings, there was some discussion related to the town of Berlin providing this oversight and inspections as a standalone community. But, but the discussions went further as to, as to the cost of this endeavor. Should it be borne by taxpayer, or should it be a part of the establishment license fee? And when we thought about that, that could possibly also be prohibitive. So.
That was absolutely one of our issues. Yeah, and there was, I think there was a search to see if we could find a private company that would come in and do these inspections, and I don't believe we could find one.
Well, we found a couple, but they were very expensive. That was where the prohibitive cost of that option was not an option. So that's where, in my mind, the county health department is already, they already have an inspection service in place for all the body piercing establishments that are on the boardwalk. Our establishments use the same equipment, we use needles, we use autoclaves, we sterilize everything. The only difference is the process, and in fact, body piercing is more invasive than tattooing. We create abrasions on the skin, body piercing is piercing through the skin. So that's a whole nother discussion. But the inspection mechanism is there, it's in place at the county level, it's just not mandated for tattoo establishments, it's only mandated for piercing establishments.
Have you, have you had this discussion that you shared tonight with the county commissioners?
I have not.
Then I guess my question would be, you know, you have compelling argument here, but why haven't you approached the commissioners?
It was my understanding that the information was relayed to them a year and a half ago, and when they came back and said no, I lost, I let the air out of my balloon, so to speak. Because I didn't feel like, and no offense to the previous administration, but I didn't feel like we had to support 100% of the previous administration. So I don't, I'm not one for rocking the boat when I feel like I'm pushing against the tide. And pretty adamant and an advocate for my industry. And I think if this doesn't work in the county and in this town, you might see me in Annapolis arguing that the state of Maryland needs to pony up and come up with legitimate regulations for my industry. Because there are counties in this state that are just, I mean, there are people that are tattooing that have no guidance whatsoever. You could go to Salisbury and start tattooing tomorrow if you chose to. I don't think that's right. I mean, it might be your dream, and I wish you all the best in your efforts, but there needs to be oversight. I've been, 30 years I've been doing this. When I started in the state of Delaware, we had no guidance. About 14, 15 years ago, the state of Delaware established a same type of thing, but for the state. Now we have the health department come in every year and inspect us. And the fact that the state of Maryland does not have any of that guidance for that regulation leaves it up to the counties to determine what they want to do. Well, we're in a business that is a billion-dollar industry, and yet there's no oversight for the health and safety of people. I mean, I know at least a dozen tattoo artists that come to this area and tattoo out of hotel rooms because, because they can. And I would like to see a little bit more oversight for the health and safety of the citizens of Maryland, personally.
David, when the request was made in 2018, was that done from the mayor via letter? Or was there a formal presentation being made?
He sent the letter to the county on May, May the 25th of 2018. It says, it's not attached to the staff report that you have in your package, but.
But nobody made a formal presentation?
No.
There was a request.
I think he asked to get on the agenda and we stole that.
Correct.
Because you could only speak down there, Snow Hill, if you get permission.
So we're back here seeking permission. And to approach. There also could have been some confusion that we were trying to change, the, what was going on in Ocean City as well, because we were trying to get the county level to do the inspections. So the county commissioners might have thought we were trying to get tattooing going in Ocean City as well.
And just to be clear, so that everybody that's watching and everybody that's in attendance, the regulations that we're talking about are only for the municipal limits of Berlin. The request that was made to the county was only regarding the municipal limits of the town of Berlin. So that's all we're talking about here.
But at the county level, they wouldn't have to put a line item that says just for the Berlin town. All I want to see is an inspection mandate for tattoo establishments. They can still, they can still have their regulations to have a doctor or osteopath on the premises. Ocean City can still mandate that you have to be a physician or osteopath to do a tattoo. Snow Hill, Pokelope, nothing will change. The only thing that will alter is the inspection mechanism that they currently use for body piercing will then be mandated also for tattoo establishments. That's all that would have to change so that Berlin could submit and put these regulations into place, and there would be a mechanism where the inspections by the health department would be mandated by these regulations. That's, in my mind, in my logic, I believe that's all, that's all that would change. And it would only affect the municipality of Berlin proper because of the way that it's written into the code at the county level.
Is, I wouldn't want this to go on too long, is this two years enough?
I was hoping that the last two years was enough, and it wasn't, but we got pretty far. I mean, there's not a whole lot more we need to do other than to get on the health department's docket so that we can have a formal request and have a formal answer to that request. And then if they say no, we're not going to do that, then there are other options that don't involve effectively outlawing the process of tattooing. But that's not the direction that I would like to go in. I would like to have health department oversight, inspections, and clean and healthy establishments that are doing business within the town of Berlin. I've had a few people ask, well, what happens when 12 or 15 tattoo shops show up? Well, that's not going to happen because I guarantee you, the commercial property owners in this town aren't going to have that many, they don't, they're going to limit the amount of people that come in and try to open these businesses, and the market is going to determine how many of these businesses exist. If there was a market for body piercing, there'd be a body piercing shop in Berlin because there are no regulations, or the regulations are county-wide for body piercing. But there's no market for a body piercing-only establishment because they are more quick turnaround, and we're not. Like when I sit down with a client, we're sitting there for an hour, two, three, four hours, minimum, because of the nature of our business and the nature of the art that we practice.
And I just want to go back, Dave, it comes under mayor. If this is eliminated, then anyone can just come in? The moratorium?
Yeah.
And one thing that I think needs to be clarified, we're trying to get before, the committee was trying to get before the county commissioners who also function as the county board of health. And I think that's an important distinction to make.
Absolutely.
We're not trying to, the committee was not trying to get before the county health department, they're trying to get before the commissioners who function as the county board of health.
That's correct. So I think it's, it's pretty clear that from the discussion that we really need to extend this.
And that's, that's up to the council this evening.
Because if we don't, well, people put it this way, I think it's a, it's a viable project that we undertook, and that's just my opinion, I'm not, I'm not here to make those decisions. But even if, if we don't extend this, and, and if we don't extend it, we have to refile that ordinance to, in my opinion, to prohibit it because you will have potentially shops opening up and people getting hurt.
And I agree with David. I would like to extend it, and for two years, but I would also like to reconvene the tattoo advisory committee with a couple new members because we're missing a couple, and start from where we left off, explain everything that we talked about up to this point, how we got to this point, and what our options are moving forward, and expedite that moving forward so that we can get a final legitimate on-the-record response from the county board of health to determine whether or not our efforts are fruitful or not, and at that time decide what the tattoo advisory committee should suggest to the town as a direction on how to move forward. That's, I'm for moving this moratorium for another two years so that we can continue our work.
I'll go ahead and make that motion then, that we extend this moratorium to November, I guess November 18th, 2022.
The current moratorium ends November 18th, so we went out two years from that.
Oh, so.
So it would be.
For two years, okay. And allow the ordinance committee to reconvene with the, with appointments from the mayor for their new members, and then, yes, that's my, that's my motion, extend the moratorium two years.
So we have a motion for, motion 2020 dash 28 by council member Oris. And second?
I'll second.
And the second by council member Perdell, all those in favor.
Can I interrupt? Because the motion that we had in the packet did not mention reconvening with the committee.
Okay, I'll amend my motion then. Approve extending the current tattoo moratorium from November 18th to November 18th, 2022.
But we should also, as part of that motion, reconvene the committee.
Okay, and that will help, that will happen, just for clarity, between the chair and vice chair and the town administrator and the town attorney, and coordinate that, correct?
Well, no, you'll have to appoint.
Of one new member, or two, whatever the case.
Yeah.
Do you have to reappoint the whole committee?
Well, you probably should because that, you know, the committee wasn't formally disbanded, but for all intents and purposes, it wasn't disbanded.
Okay, so then, yes, we'll take, if council member Oris, if that's still your motion, with the caveat of re-implementing the committee? Is that, does that sound?
Yeah, yeah, yes, except.
And still seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously. And thank you both for coming in this evening, and we'll be in touch.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And then if we could, we'll go back to agenda item number two, which will be the introduction of our new officer, Anthony Rhodes, with the police chief while on down, taking the lead.
Good evening, good evening, mayor and councils. We have opportunity to go ahead and present before you, PFC Anthony Rhodes. He's a 13-year certified police officer, he's also a button of the Marine Corps, and we're proud to be having him as part of the Berlin Police Department. He just completed his acclimation period, so he's free and great prior before the meeting. He went all the way to Solberg with a patient. He went all the way to Solberg with a, a patient, now he's back here now, so. He presents to you, PFC Anthony Rhodes.
Awesome, thank you, sir.
I'd like to say I'm excited to be here and happy to be working.
Thanks for joining the board.
Yes, thank you, thank you. Thank you for what you do.
Um, let's, uh, we've got a council member there, if you have a question?
No, no, I just said welcome.
Let's, uh, let's take a picture together down here for the press. Police chief, come on, join us.
Smile.
Yeah, smile pretty, they can see through these things.
Smile with your eyes.
She smiled with your eyes.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Now, Anthony, how many hours of FPOs do you still have left?
I'm all complete, sir.
Okay, so just to inform the public, when a new officer comes on like yourself, how many hours of FPOs or field training do you go through?
Eighty hours with a certified field trainer.
So you'll start on the road by yourself when?
Tonight.
Very nice. Well, thank you and stay safe.
Thank you.
So we'll progress to agenda item number four, we're allowed, we're allowed to order this evening. And that's Senate Bill 677 and House Bill 1392 from last legislative session. And the town administrator Jeff Fleetwood, our electric utility director, Tim Lawrence, and I will, will take point on the presentation. Um, are you okay with me taking a stab at it and then you fill in the blanks?
Well, that's why Tim's here.
So last legislative cycle, well, let's back up just a little bit. There was a bill, Senate Bill 516 that went into effect that had some impact on our electric utilities. And what that is, what that bill has done is placed a standard of renewable energy portfolio credits that need to be satisfied by each electric utility. And there are five municipal electric utilities in the state, Berlin being one of those. Um, and if you don't satisfy the tiered requirements, there's something called an alternative compliance payment that you have to begin to pay. And that's almost in the form of a penalty on the, on the electric utility. So if you take a look at the presentation, you'll see a graph that compares Senate Bill 516 with the legislation that was introduced last legislative cycle, which is Senate Bill 677 and House Bill 1392. Um, the, you can see there's a clear cost distinction for our customer base here. Um, with, with the legislation that's being advanced, we hope, if it were to be successful, that the town of Berlin could save a possible $2,445,400 from 2021 to 2030. Um, so that's a pretty sizable savings for our electric utility customers. Uh, we've included the fiscal policy note from the state of Maryland in case you're needing something to help get you to sleep at night. And, and then this legislation, um, last cycle was advanced by delegate Mounts and Senator Eckert. Um, we're participating, Tim, Jeff, myself, the other electric utilities have been participating in soon conference calls. Um, working towards a strategy of how we're going to advance for this cycle. So we're hoping that delegate Mounts and Senator Eckert will pick the bills back up and, and will be fruitful in this cycle. So the whole point of this presentation, one, to inform the council of what took place. The town of Berlin last cycle took a stance of support for Senate Bill 677 and House Bill 1392. And we're looking for that same encouragement and support from the town and the council along with the fact that Easton Utilities has, has gone forward with hiring a lobbyist from O-line Government Affairs, his name is Brett Leininger. And at the tune of $45,000. So the five municipal electric utilities, um, Easton has taken on the initial contract of O-line Government Affairs. But they have said, if the other municipalities would like to chip in, you have some skin in the game, it's a nice advocate resource for us as an electric utility. And that cost breakdown has been adjusted based off of the way that the renewable portfolio standards are, are calculated. So that's based off of the load of each utility. Uh, that puts the town of Berlin's share, if we chose to contribute, at $2,858. And this evening, we are asking for the council to consider chipping in that amount to, to offset the cost of the lobbyists and to commit to, to taking an active role in this legislation and helping reduce the costs for our electric utility customers. So if I've missed anything, Tim?
You did really good.
Well, thank you very much. Not bad for a month on the gig.
Mayor, I would like to just, just add that this is not, you, you mentioned this is not new, the last cycle. Then Mayor G. Williams, with council support, did go to an after for more than one occasion, the lobby. He did submit, you know, a letter to Mary Beth Croza, asking for her support on all this. And again, what happened in the current year, this bill, it went through the house and was good. And then COVID came, all legislature did died at that point. So now we're back into the new cycle, so we're starting from scratch.
Has, has anyone reached out to Senator Croza's office about this or?
Mayor Williams' last letter is dated October 2 of 2020.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
So what we'll be doing if the council chooses to move forward on this is updating that letter to reflect the new change in administration, to reflect the new members of the council, just so that our representatives do see a united force if that's what the council chooses to do.
I think it's a no brainer.
Yeah, I think it's a no brainer.
I mean, the cost savings is pretty huge, so.
Bill four, we got, I don't have any motion papers that you've got there.
It is within the spending limit of the mayor or the town administrator. However, with something like this that has such a huge impact on the, on the taxpayers and the electric utility customers, and where we're really looking for that unified support. So we're going to be, we're going to be asking you to make some phone calls. We're going to be saying, get in touch with your representatives and, and see if we can really push this thing forward. So I think it takes a, a full council buy into that.
Yeah, my support.
So I am asking for a formal motion from the council for that expenditure of $2,858.
Second.
We have a motion by council member Purnell and a second by council member Varell. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those? Council member Warris, I didn't hear you, I'm sorry.
Oh, I was an aye.
Okay, thank you. The motion passes unanimously. Um, leading into, while we're on the same topic of electric utilities, um, Tim and his group have once again won some awards from the American Municipal Power Amp. And we're going to present those to Tim this evening. Now, they're not in the packet, these awards came through, um, within the, the past day or so. So let's start with the safety award. So let me read this first, if you don't mind. Um, this is the third year that Tim and his group have received, um, the electric safety award. They won it in 2017, 2019, and now in 2020. Um, and just so that everybody knows how, how much of a feat this actually is, we're talking about 16,640 reported work hours with no reported injuries in 2020. So that's, that's huge. Um, the award is for the transmission and distribution side of the electric utility. And this means our linesmen, chief lines, chief linesmen and meter readers. So that's, that's an awesome award, so. And we have one more. So the next award is actually for the, the power plant. Um, and that's for the upgrade, I think I missed a T on our award. Um, it's for the power plant and the recent improvement to switch over to natural gas from the diesel generator. So the new generator will save the taxpayers approximately $200,000 annually, reduce our carbon emissions, which means 30% less carbon dioxide being emitted into the environment when compared to our diesel generators. Uh, there's some less maintenance and they're much more efficient.
That's correct.
Is there anything you would like to add about those?
Uh, this project here was, uh, went on for about a year and three months, something like that. And, uh, it was a project to go away from diesel powered generators and go to natural gas, which is cleaner, it's better for the environment, and it's a good story.
And maybe once the COVID requirements are lifted, we could have like an open house so people could see what we're talking about and actually see everybody experience that generation.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Make sure you pass our thanks along to the entire department.
Yep.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, the next item on our agenda, agenda item number five, is a discussion about the Worcester County tariffs funds that the town of Berlin has received. And our town administrator Jeff Fleetwood is going to take point on this.
Good evening, mayor, council. We, we received about a week and a half ago, a check that came from Worcester County, which was passed to the county from the state and then from the feds to the state. And we received a check in excess of $171,000. That is a reimbursement check, okay? So the things that went in, um, that made that, made that happen for us were things that we have done from the onset of, of COVID. And this is through December of 2020. The maximum amount that you would be eligible for was $671,000. So we met that well before December 31. Um, things that are included in that are all the PPE. Folks that were out, Arnold's crew, the chief, the chief and his police folks, doing things to help mitigate the, the hazard in itself. So this, this is a, this is a reimbursement check. Um, it's a sizable check, so the reason, what I wanted to tell you that. But I think my recommendation, staff's recommendation to the mayor and council is what do we do with that money? And I, again, a staff recommendation, Natalie's not here, um, would be to take that $171,000 check, go to the Bank of Ocean City, establish a, a new account. And we can call it a stabilization reserve fund, we can call it a reserve fund. And I'd like to put that money away so that we can get started on this stabilization reserve that we talked about four or five months ago.
And I would need a formal motion and a vote by the mayor and council.
That is correct. The Bank of Ocean City won't allow me to do anything with it unless you tell me what I can do with it.
Of course, this being a reimbursement check means that funds have been expended.
They, the funds have already been expended.
So, so, uh, it seems to me that, that the check could be used to replace those funds.
Those funds that we spent, the overwhelming majority, the overwhelming majority were already planned, it was payroll dollars. So they were already budgeted.
But, but at this reimbursement and funds have been expended, why aren't we using it to replace those funds?
Again, the only explanation that I can give is those monies for salaries, for, for payroll, they were already budgeted, so it wasn't any additional monies at all that were spent.
Okay, correct.
Okay.
And if the town incurred any further expenses as a result of COVID-19, this is some funding that, once it's placed in that fund, will allow us to have that ability to pull from. So that's what we're seeking the council's approval or denial on.
You could always use that as a general fund. Because it would be reimbursing the thing that you expended.
Correct.
But right now, I think it's.
What, what, what I'm after is to put that money in a separate account and, and we can call it whatever we want. And what goes to my mind, as I said, is a stabilization reserve. And we get to the end of, or close to the end of the budget year, and we decide we want to use that money to help.
That's correct.
This will not be a, this will not be an account that's set up with any type of checking. It's just going to be, the money will be in the bank and it's going to be in this particular fund. I make a motion, we set the account up.
Second. Any preference on, I don't know who went first, any preference?
I defer to the vice president.
So we have a motion by council member Purnell and a second by, uh, council member Varell to place the money in an account, um, at Bank of Ocean City until we need the funds. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, motion passes unanimously. All right, we'll progress to agenda item number six, which is the town administrator's report.
Okay. Kelsey, if you would, up on the screen, if you take a look. And I'm, I'm going to walk up and make it easier because I can't see that part, to be honest with you.
I have a laser pointer.
That's all right. This, this picture, um, it depicts for us Maple, Maple Avenue and the gentleman that was here a couple weeks ago regarding the development called the Willows. Um, the, the council that evening, you know, asked the developer, you know, what would they do as it would relate to extending the footprint, if you will. So one of the things that council member Nichols asked, could we, could we have inputted a sidewalk that runs from Elizabeth into the Willows? Because that's the one section on Maple that does not have sidewalks. They have agreed to that, I say they, Ingraham with, with Willows has agreed to do that. And in turn, they've also agreed to pave Maple Avenue from the Willows all the way up to Flower Street. So you can see, I'm, I'm trying to, how do I do this? I'm, I'm, I feel like I'm a black kangaroo. But this is a section of sidewalk that we're talking about, MA. Okay, and then the paving would go from the entrance here all the way out. So then the question comes up, why? When we go back to the meeting a couple weeks ago, there's about an 11,000 square foot piece of property at the entrance. That from, since the early 1990s, the towns believed it was their property. Well, in a title search that Ingraham did when they were receiving their financing, it turned out to be that that 11,000 square feet of property actually belonged to the town. The, the overwhelming majority of that 11,000 square feet of property is actually at Forter Grove. So we went back to Ingraham and said, you know, the options were give it to them, which I didn't like, sell it to them, bargain for it. Um, so what we did in turn, we, we estimated the value of that 11,000 square feet of property to be approximately $10,000. And the work that they're going to do with the sidewalk in the, in the street is estimated at about $28,000. So my recommendation to the mayor and council, no actions needed tonight because they're coming back, um, the next meeting in November for the public hearing. So they'll be here for that, but I wanted to keep you impressed on, on what we're at this and to get any feedback.
Are these documented estimates?
Yes.
And Dave Gasco?
Yeah.
Just to be clear, no public hearing on this, right? That it is.
That'd be public notice.
Public notice.
I'm sorry, a public here.
The next council meeting, we will be asking the council to take action on.
Yes, and, and that action will be to transfer that property to the developer subject to the conditions that Jeff just spelled out.
Yes, I just wanted everyone to tune on that. Um, I do want to give the, the council an update. A week ago Friday, there was a, on private property, there was an oil spill, fuel spill at 107 West. Um, Chesapeake and Bart Mill Services were, were called on site, and I think we know who those folks are. Uh, they came on site. They spent about a week's, week's time, not only on West Street, but also in, in the adjoining ditches. Because what happened with the oil, it spilled, it ran down the driveway, went into the storm drain, it went out to the ditch that runs from, from West Street back out to South Main. Uh, they actually contained what fuel got into the ditch, just on the east side of, of Main Street in the ditch. So you can see all the, um, the absorbent socks that are in the ditch now, they're still. So you can see all the absorbent socks that are in the ditch now, they're still there, they'll be coming up at some point. But again, that was on private property. If you walked this morning, I still smell it, it's nowhere near what it was a week ago. They excavated a lot of dirt on the property on West Street. So I just wanted to give everyone an update on that.
What was the cause of the fuel spill?
Human error. Human error. Also want to share that we had our bulk pickup last week. Went very well. We had a new process in place, and Mary can probably add more to the process. But we had asked residents this year, probably the biggest thing that we asked residents to do was to call in or go online and fill out a form to let us know in advance what they wanted picked up. Four items or less per household. Anything with fabric had to be wrapped. We did provide protective coverings that they could pick up at town hall. And what was fascinating this year, and I don't have a reason as to why, but for calendar year 2020, five tons of bulk were picked up compared to last year, same pickup date, 13 tons. So significant difference. And from Dave Wheaton's perspective, he said, in all the years he's done this, he said this was about the smoothest. So it was good.
Jeff, I don't mean to interrupt Jeff, but how many, are you able to tell us how many residents took advantage of the bulk pickup?
Not at hand. We do have that information, but I don't have it at hand.
Okay, thank you.
And the only other thing that I would say is we do have one more pickup date. As with any new process, which we've already discovered some things that we need to tweak, but I think that overall it went very, very well. And the response from the public seems to be fine with calling in or submitting the forms online. It assists the public works department greatly in knowing what they will have to deal with when they get to a particular property. So the regulation, or I shouldn't say it's none of the regulations, it's policy for people to explain what they're going to be putting out ahead of time just makes it easier on everyone.
And I want to publicly thank the public here in the town of Berlin because, again, from, I'm not out there when that's happening, but again, from Dave Wheaton's perspective and the ladies down in customer service, they said that it went relatively smooth. So a big thank you to all the residents as well.
And that next one's the 18, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah, the next one's on the 18.
Next one's safe.
Now I want to give an update on the water tower over on 346. Jamie is not here this evening. As you are aware, the tower was shut down about two and a half weeks ago for maintenance, painting, et cetera. The water tower was done today. Jamie called me and said, take a ride. We go over it, and I'm colorblind, by the way. So Jamie forgot that. He said, what do you see up there? I said, Berlin. He goes, well, it's painted blue, not black. So it's been repainted today. The lettering has been put back to the original color. But that tank is just a little bit of place to do it, and then it'll be done completely. And that's all I have.
Departmental report, Steve.
I'll let Tim go.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Only thing I really have to report on as far as work that's going on in the electric department. If you look downtown, we started installing the, I know it's a little early, but we we always start before Thanksgiving installing the Christmas decorations on the street light poles and the wreaths and that type of thing. We're actually scheduled to pick up the Christmas tree this Thursday on the 12th and set it at the Atlantic Hotel. It's weather permitting because it's supposed to rain Wednesday and Thursday in the forecast, and if it does, we'll pick it up on Friday and set it on Friday. And then next week, they'll be decorating the tree. And then on the 27th, day after Thanksgiving, will be the lighting of the tree. But I don't think it's going to be a full blown event. We're just going to kind of light it and be ready to go that evening. That's about it.
And I want to add something for Tim. Shame on you for not sharing this. I think this is pretty big news. We are pursuing a grant to install a rooftop solar system down on Schoolfield Substation location. That would be a 23 kW system. So we're applying for that, and we'll see where it falls, and hopefully that comes through.
Thank you.
I want to read Ivy Wells' Departmental Report. She wanted me to share, she's working on a Department of Housing and Community Development Main Street Maryland Emergency COVID Funding Grant for the downtown businesses. She's also attending a Zoom conference tomorrow. Kelly Schultz, Department of Commerce, on the entertaining venue slash restaurant relief grant. And a reminder that shops are open this Friday night, late for second Friday in Berlin. Mary?
The only thing that I have, the Worcester Recreation wrapped up their tents programming in St. Dick's Department, several weeks ago now. But despite the fact that we are dealing with a pandemic and they had some restrictions in place, because of that, they felt that the turnout was very good, the response was, it was a welcome program. So we're looking forward to continuing this kinds of programming with Worcester Recreation. It's definitely an asset for the town. Thank you.
George?
Good evening, everyone. Since we last met, we have had, we had Halloween, we had a full force out for that evening with no incidents, no issues whatsoever. Had opportunity to meet with the school board on Friday and right up to today, which is actual influx of more students. All the students that actually wished to come back to school actually started back today. And they've been having issues at several schools because it's only four kids on the school bus. All the parents wish to get here and bring their kids. So we're actually talking about long lines, not only at school. There's long lines at Dunkin' Donuts, there's long lines all the way throughout the town. So again, that has been an issue. Again, the school has, I mean, Berlin has all the schools except for Ocean City Elementary and Shaw. So you have to think about Worcester Pratt, Buckingham, Berlin, and the high school, middle school. And parents trying to rush from one school to another school. So we're trying to go ahead and move people around accordingly to go ahead and adjust and assist with those little parents. With COVID, we haven't had the opportunity to do a lot of the manmade training, so we are actually in full training mode. Academy, or actually, the Training Commission went ahead and stated that we didn't have to meet certain requirements for the first three, four months, and then everything is back on full swing. So that's going to be one of the big things that we do in the next month and a half, is really go ahead and try to get in all of the in-service that we need to have, that's my report.
Thank you.
Kelsey?
I don't have anything this evening.
Ivy has just texted me, so let me read this real quick. She said she forgot to add about the tree being put up on the 12th and decorated on the 19th.
Thank you, that's all. Thank you, sir. So my only comment is that Wednesday is Veterans Day, town offices will be closed. And take the opportunity to thank everyone that you know or encounter that has served. It is an ultimate sacrifice from your family and it really goes a long way in keeping us safe and free. And I do appreciate that service. And we do have a number of town employees that have also served, so take the opportunity to tell them thank you as well. One for their service here to our community, and another for their service to the country. That's the only thing that I have this evening. Comments from the council, and we'll start with Councilmember Purnell. Councilmember Varell? Councilmember Horace?
I just have two, hopefully brief, things. First, I want to just publicly thank the department heads. I reached out to get some scheduling for tours of some facilities, and we're working on that. And then my, so thank you. And my other thing tonight is just going back to the bulk pickup. It's great that it sounds like it went well, but I did receive some some concerns about the accessibility on the website to the actual floor. It's not as easy as for everyone, so maybe I'm wondering if town staff can look into, on our front banner, we have, you know, there's the town landscape, and then there's the coronavirus information. If something for like bulk pickup, if we can maybe move that up and over so that it's a little bit accessible? I mean, it takes about five or six clicks to get to it right now.
Some of that is intentional. It's to, it's to make people have to at least see that the policy is there so they don't get all the way to the end and then say that they didn't know certain regulations were in place.
Can we just have the link then that goes to the policy, and then Matt has the form?
Sure.
Like it is now?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. And that's all that I have.
Thank you.
Councilmember Ner?
Yeah, I just want to talk about, I recently attended a meeting with merchants. And in that meeting, it was well attended by the merchants, there was quite a few there. And they asked the mayor to come in and address some of the concerns that they were having with recent policy changes. And I do want to compliment the merchants. They were well organized, they brought their thoughts together in a cohesive manner. And on the same note, the mayor did a great job helping to alleviate a lot of those concerns. And the majority of it centered around marketing of certain events, but we can't call them events now, so the mayor suggested we call them activities. Banners over the Main Street. Talked a little bit about the prayer, which will be addressed in future meetings. And then the issue of the coolest small town. And I'm glad to report that Berlin will still remain a cool, small town, so.
Thank you. Now, any comments from the public? Either in attendance or those that have submitted questions? So we'll start with those in attendance. Yes, Mr. Free?
Hi, thank you, Mayor and Council. Steve Free, Berlin Chamber of Commerce, with Larnette Saint Amont, our executive director. Thank you, Councilman Ner, for your attention to the merchants who were very, very concerned. And thank you, Mayor, for attending. In the future, we'd like these meetings to go through the Chamber of Commerce so that we may organize them a little bit better. There were some people that wanted to be there that couldn't be there. But we appreciate you coming to address those. And are you prepared to respond to any of those things that you were going to look into, like the banner placement tonight?
I can, the town administrator and I met, so if you would like to ask, we can probably work through the Agenda Items that may be lingering. So the banners, this afternoon we talked, they were in the draft phase, they will be going up. What's next?
There was an issue of free horse and carriage rides. We were going to look into the Health Department, and they were going to be the determining factor.
Correct. So the Health Department dissented on the carriage rides. They, Ivy Wells, our Economic and Community Development Director, sent in a COVID plan for that carriage ride activity. For the Health Department's dissent, they said we could do it as long as the carriage company helped enforce the distancing along with some criteria as to who can sit on the carriage at the same time. And that's going to be the responsibility of the carriage company. For the ICE event, since the population of downtown is probably going to be more than normal, we are going to move the carriage rides to Baker Street. And they'll extend the line, queuing will take place down Baker Street as well. And subsequent weekends, those carriage rides will be moved back to Pitt Street.
Thank you, Mayor. One other question. I guess the concern from merchants, the town has generously supported the merchants and the promotions during the holiday events. And many of the merchants have come to depend on those promotions. And in a year like we've had this year, with many businesses that have suffered and need to make the next two and a half months profitable to stay in business, they want, I guess, a clear understanding of what things the town's going to continue to do, like brochures, social media posts, any paid advertising. What is the town able to or willing to do promotion-wise, like they have in the past? You know, so that they can make adjustments accordingly.
So the extent to the paid advertisements that will take place will be coming through the Economic and Development, Economic and Community Development Office. The same direction that I gave the night of the merchant meeting is the same path that we're going to continue down, which is the advertising of our businesses will be open late. And you can take in the shopping and the lights and the ice sculptures that evening for the ICE event. The subsequent Small Business Saturday, we will post that it is Small Business Saturday. Along with the fact that our shops are open, please come patronize our businesses. And then the Friday art scrolls will also be promoted. So along the same path that we discussed that evening, and if I'm missing anything, that will be coming out of the office of Ivy Wells.
Okay, yeah, the brochure, I think the distribution of the
Yeah, I think those are printed and are downstairs already for disbursement and, to my knowledge.
Okay. Do you have anything?
Perfect, thank you.
Counsel, Mayor, thank you all very much for your support. And the chamber, we look forward to continuing our great working relationship that we've had in the past and move forward.
And I want to add real quick, Mayor. The decision for this body here and for all staff in the town, we hear you loud and clear, but please understand and be flexible. I'm 64 years old, and this is the first pandemic that I've ever experienced. Okay? And I think it's probably in all of our lives, it's the first one that we've experienced. So I appreciate your flexibility. And we're here, we're all here to work with this together.
And I will say, even today, we were meeting with merchants, trying to make sure that things go off without a hitch and that everybody's safe and able to enjoy the shops, because we do want people to come and shop in our small businesses. It's been a hard time for everyone, it's especially hard for those that think they're living with a storefront. So, and the businesses have been great to work with. So I don't see any reason why that would change moving forward. Thank you. Any other questions from those in attendance this evening? All right, any questions that we received through the online? Any comments from the press?
Move forward.
Thank you, sir.